... meeting of the Greensboro City Council. And let's begin tonight's meeting with an invocation by Rabbi Eli Azar Havivi from F. David Synagogue, please.
Creator of us all, bless all the inhabitants of our city, our state, our country, our world with your spirit. Help us, citizens of all races and creeds, to forge a common bond in true harmony, to banish hatred and bigotry, and to practice the ideals of freedom and of shared responsibility that are the pride and glory of our country, the United States of America. Give of your wisdom to the leaders of our community, so that they may envision for us a path of living and working together, so that peace and security, happiness and prosperity, justice and freedom will abide in our midst. May it be your will, O God, to help us create for ourselves, our community of love and harmony, peace and friendship. Help us to see your divine image in ourselves and in our neighbor. May our horizons be filled with hope and the anticipation of blessing. Enrich us with good friends and the strength of character to enhance your world. May we rise to face each day ready to serve you through serving each other with our spirit committed to goodness. May our city of Greensboro, under your providence, be an influence for good throughout the world, uniting all people in peace. And in the words of the prophet Micah, "Let every person, each one of your children, live under his vine and fig tree, and let none of them be afraid." Amen.
Thank you. Now, if we will stand, Dr. Wade, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of fifty seconds, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Manager, would you please recognize our courier for the evening?
Yes, Honored, tonight we have Greg Barnett with Training and Employment, who has been with the city since January 16th of 2007. Mr. Barnett is standing to my right, council's left, and members of the audience, he is available if you have any issue you would like to get to City Council. Simply bring it to him, and he will get it to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The procedure, our council procedure for each meeting involves an electronic voting process. Each member of council must vote unless there is a direct conflict. No council member knows how any other member will vote until the vote is recorded and displayed on the above screens. We do allow for speakers to address the council on agenda items as they are called, and we ask that you please fill out the form to request to speak at the front desk as you enter the chamber over in this corner. Zoning matters allow for a 20-minute presentation, both for and against the rezoning. There's also a five-minute rebuttal period for each side, either pro or con. With other business matters, the council allows for a five minutes per speaker for comments, and as speakers are called, you'll be asked to come to your left over by the window to the podium when your names are called. During the meeting, we practice Robert's Rules of Order as to the conduct of our business. We also, we have a consent agenda. Tonight, those consist of items eight through nineteen, which are items that are voted on with one single vote to expedite what is believed, what are believed to be routine and non-controversial items. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda in order to discuss a specific issue. And at this time, I would ask anyone in the room who has a cellphone or a pager to please either turn it off or put it on silent mode. And depending on the length of the meeting, as is our custom, we will, we will take a break around 7:30 PM. And if I may at this time, I would like to briefly, we have guests with us tonight, and I would like to recognize those guests. We have a group that has been here in the city for, I guess, two, maybe two days now. The city is hosting, this is a contingent of local government officials from Indonesia outside of Ireland. Please stand and be recognized. And I'd just like to say, on behalf of the city of Greensboro, we certainly welcome you, and we hope you can stay for as long as you will tonight, and observe our meeting, and we wish you well. And council members, they did get a token from the city of Greensboro for their attendance here tonight, and thank you so much for being with us, being our guests. Also, I would ask for a motion to excuse Councilmember Thompson, who is under the weather tonight.
So moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to postpone item five, which is a resolution honoring the memory of the late Yulma Johnson Whitley.
So moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. And to remove item twenty, a resolution authorizing economic development incentive grant and loan not to exceed the amount of $4,176,775 in total to Landport Investments LLC, to be funded by appropriating up to $4,176,775 of voter-approved economic development bond, funds, excuse me.
So moved.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, the agenda is so amended. Council, I direct your attention to item sixteen on the agenda, which was to be presented by Councilman Thompson, and in his absence, I have volunteered to do that, except, Madam Clerk, I have an empty folder here.
Sixteen?
Six, did I say six? Six, yeah. Oh, I kept wrong folder. Thank you. Here it is. Thank you. This is a resolution declaring the week of October 2nd through 8th, 2011, as Mental Illness Awareness Week. Whereas Mental Illness Awareness Week, October 2nd through 8th, 2011, is aimed at reducing the stigma about mental illness and getting information to family members and people with mental illness, because silence and stigma add to the difficulty of living with mental illness, but education, support, and advocacy change attitudes and lives. Whereas the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, Guilford affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, is an organization of people living with mental illness and their families and friends, whose mission is to promote recovery and optimize the quality of life of those living with mental illness and their families by providing education, advocacy, and support. Whereas mental illnesses are no-fault illnesses of the brain and have been scientifically proven to be highly treatable. Whereas serious mental illness, such as major depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, obsessive-compulsive disorder, severe anxiety disorders, borderline personality disorder, and post-traumatic stress disorders affect one in every four people annually. Whereas serious mental illness, which affects one out of every five families, is more common than heart disease, cancer, and diabetes. Whereas scientific research is producing tremendous breakthroughs in the understanding of mental illnesses, resulting in more effective treatments that allow people to reclaim full and productive lives. Whereas it is important to provide information about mental illness to the community, whereas family members, friends, and people living with mental illness are often afraid to ask for help or information, or do not know where to turn for accurate and supportive information and help, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Greensboro that the week of October 2nd through October 8th, 2011, is declared Mental Illness Awareness Week in Greensboro, North Carolina, to increase public awareness and knowledge of mental illness, adopted this fourth day of October, 2011.
Move the item.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Second, excuse me, thank you, thank you. Now, is anyone here to receive this? If you'd step forward, Mr. Thompson, I'll do this in his stead, if I may.
If you will, let me run back and flip the switch, sir. NAMI Guilford is delighted with your recognition of our cause, and we do want to draw attention to mental illness as a disease that challenges us all, which is why we come before all of Greensboro and ask for some acknowledgement of this. And in this week of awareness, I hope that you will take a moment or two sometime during this week to think about those people who are afflicted with mental illnesses. NAMI Guilford appreciates the support it has received from all the citizenry of Greensboro, and we are appreciative of the efforts on behalf of the mentally ill by everybody in the area and North Carolina, and we thank you for the recognition of this week for us. I have as my guest here Kathy Hawkins, who is the Vice President. I am Jack Glenn, President of NAMI Guilford. Thank you.
Would you give your address for the record? I failed to ask that.
It's a long one. 102 East Greenway North, Greensboro, North Carolina.
Hello, neighbor. Okay, and to make this official council, please vote. And the motion passes eight to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven will be a presentation on Cyberbullying Awareness Month by Julie Essie Gonzalez, Miss Teen Guilford County, USA. I guess you'd give your name and address, just so we'll know.
Hi, my name is Julie Essie Gonzalez, and my address is 4210 Penny Dell Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina. Hi, my name is Julie Essie Gonzalez, and I'm Miss Guilford County Teen USA. And October is Bullying Awareness Month. Did you know that 160,000 students miss school every day because of bullying? Cyberbullying is when a child is tormented, harassed, humiliated, or otherwise targeted by another child using the internet, digital technologies, or mobile phones. In the most extreme cases, children have resorted to violence or even committed suicide due to relentless cyberbullying. But you can help. Parents, talk to your kids and let them know that any type of cyberbullying is wrong. Kids, talk to your friends and report any issues you see to a parent or teacher. If you know anybody who was a victim of cyberbully, report the attacks to your internet service provider, school officials, or the local law enforcement. Get more information at StopCyberBullying.org and take a stand against cyberbullying. May your night, members of City Council, distinguished guests, and city residents. My name is Julie Essie Gonzalez, and I'm Miss Guilford County Teen USA. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to join you tonight and bring attention to a very real and dangerous act that's potentially impacting your family or someone you know. The month of October is Anti-Bullying Awareness Month. While all of us understand what it means to be bullied, most of us refer to bullying as a big kid picking on the little kid on the playground or at school. However, the newest bullying threat is happening in a way that is just demeaning and dangerous, and is occurring through media platforms where the cruelty of the action is broadcast to hundreds or even thousands of viewers. The emotional fallout from cyberbullying is the same as the traditional bullying, only there are no bruises to kiss or scratches to mend. Cyberbullying typically happens via the use of the computer or the internet. Email messages, social networking sites such as Facebook, or mobile platforms like texting present a vast arena where cyberbullying attacks can take place. As an eighteen-year-old college student, I have seen negative impact on cyberbullying has on young people. It's cruel and painful and creates emotional scars that can last a lifetime. Recent statistics indicate that nearly one in every two teenagers have experienced some form of torment online, and girls are twice as likely as boys to be victims. Parents, it's important for you to recognize that cyberbullying can happen to your child, and you should take notice if your child is having trouble sleeping, being antisocial, avoiding going online, or using their mobile phone. And kids, please support your friends, and if you see any signs of cyberbullying, please report it to an adult, a teacher, or a law enforcement officer. I encourage everyone to visit StopCyberBullying.org to find out more about the warning signs and how to prevent this horrible act. Thank you again for inviting me to tonight's council meeting. I look forward to representing the city of Greensboro and Guilford County at the Miss North Carolina Teen USA Pageant. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? How can we, as the adults and parents, do a better job, from your standpoint, of making sure that we know what's happening? Because, you know, most of you guys have your own cellphones, and, you know, if mom asks to see it, you feel like that's an invasion of your privacy, or if you do have a social networking site, a lot of times, parents don't have the passcode. So, you know, from your standpoint, how do we help you?
Well, personally, cyberbullying is online, but it always starts from school. And I really feel that a lot of students feel that they can't tell anyone about their problems, they probably feel like our counselors aren't there for them. So I really feel like, as a school, personally, they should probably talk about it, make an assembly or something, to let them know that they're, they should report these things. I personally didn't know that if I was bullied, I should probably report it to the internet service provider. I was just like, oh, well, I mean, I'm bullied or whatever. But I really feel like if us teachers or counselors, we really talk about it and let them understand that it's wrong, and we should report it to our counselors, it would be a great first step to preventing this cause.
Do you feel that if the school was set up peer-to-peer, so that if you didn't want to go to the adult first, that you could go to a peer and then, would, do you feel like that would work?
In some cases, I feel like if you trust someone enough to tell them. I know a lot of people don't feel like they should trust someone, but if they feel that they, the peer, they can tell their peer, and the peer can possibly tell the counselor, I think that's perfectly fine. But I also think that it's responsibility of the counselor to not spread this information, because I've heard of instances where the counselors are talking to teachers about things that students still want them to know. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rickshaw.
Mr. City Manager, we discussed this at one point when we were doing the, met with our Guilford delegation. We've done this, discussed this very issue, and thank you so much for bringing it again to our attention. And I wondered, has there been anything done on the state level and the General Assembly concerning that? Because I know that we tried to do something because we had an issue before, and I'd just like to know, have we done something to maybe increase the efforts that this young lady has brought to us tonight?
Councilmember, I will double-check, but I do recall when you brought that issue up during our legislative session, that it was an item that was actively before the General Assembly at the time, and I believe they passed some changes in law in terms of cyberbullying, bullying. But I can provide you with the specifics of what did change. But in fact, that was at the session before last that it came up, and I think we had some residents here that you had talked with and brought forward, and so this is definitely something that ties nicely and dovetails with that effort from the previous year.
If you could just let us know the status of that, that would be very helpful, and maybe we could pass it on to our representative as she goes forward in her concern about this issue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're moving to item, excuse me, to our consent agenda and to our guests, our visitors tonight. Let me explain what our consent agenda is. We have, the next twelve items on our agenda are items of business that the city manager believes are of a nature that will not, that are not controversial, and that we may be able to pass with a single vote, for simplicity. So when we, we will address those now, and any member of council may wish to remove something for discussion.
Remove the consent agenda.
Items thirteen and fourteen. Okay, would you change that to?
Yes, remove the consent agenda minus items thirteen, fourteen.
Second.
Discussion, council, please vote. Okay, the consent agenda, as amended, is approved by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. And Dr. Wade, you wish to speak on item thirteen and fourteen?
Mr. Manager, item thirteen is, this is more of the problems we have with Project Homestead. I mean, not all of us were on the council when that was a problem. I thought we had paid, or pretty much taken care of the problems we had had with Project Homestead.
Thank you. This is a resolution of one of the remaining items that was outstanding related to the bankruptcy of Project Homestead.
Are there more?
None that I am aware of.
Okay, this is the last one. Move the item.
There's a motion and second, item thirteen, council, please vote. Item passes eight to zero. Dr. Wade, item fourteen.
And on item fourteen, I see this is another overrun of expenses. Can you explain what happened?
Yes, this, this project was originally cost estimated back in 2009, when the developer, the Servants Center, began applying to different sources for financing. And during the more recent process, as their financing sources came together, there were some redesign elements as they went through the city's approval process. In particular, this project has some site challenges, and the slope, at one point, was, there's a very substantial retaining wall that needs to be installed. That was originally designed to be made of timber. In the redesign process, it was changed to masonry and incorporated into the wall of the building, which pretty substantially increased the costs related to that particular cost item. Also, because there are now four financing sources involved in this project, the costs associated with closing, those loans and financing sources, went up as well. And the, the project developer is here tonight to answer any additional questions.
Mr. Manager, do we, when we get the estimates on what these projects cost, and there's overruns like that, I mean, this is a pretty big overrun, over a hundred-and-some-thousand dollars. How do we guard against that, so that we don't have to come back for these changes? Or, I mean, is that the best we can do when we estimate?
Depending on what the reason for the overrun is, as Ms. Blue described, there was a change in sort of the construction approach to this and materials costs, and so those aren't things really that we can manage against. In some projects, we may establish contingencies that would allow for that variance, but if we've got a significant construction project to do, then we will, from time to time, have to experience some overruns, particularly if this was scoped in 2009. That length of time could lead to changes in prices.
I guess my question is, would we not have known we needed brick instead of timber when we looked at it the first time, or is that another soil problem?
It's, well, it doesn't sound like it's a soil issue. It sounds like it's a change in the materials that were going to be used, and, you know, one could approach building something with lots of different solutions, and this one drove a cost increase because we changed that.
Well, I just wondered if maybe it was a problem with the retaining wall, that the wood wouldn't do, and we had to change it to brick.
I need to, Ms. Blue, do you know what the reason of the change?
I am not an engineer, so I'm not going to say that, that it was necessary to change to brick, but it is certainly far more durable. And when you incorporated it into the design of the building, I believe that it had to be masonry in there. You could not use it as, you could not use timber.
Okay. I guess my question was mainly if we could get a little closer on the estimates, so we don't have so many change orders. But I move the item.
Second. Motion, second. Seeing no discussion, council, please, vote, please. And the item passes by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. Now moving to item twenty-one on the agenda. This is a time set for a public hearing to consider a resolution confirming assessment role for water main improvements on Alcorn Road from a proposed sixteen-inch water line at the intersection of Alcorn Road and Pleasant Ridge Road northwest to the southwest corner of 7212 Alcorn Road. And for that, I would call on Mr. Manager. We have no speakers on this, by the way. Mr. Simmons.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Before we do that, motion and second to close the public hearing. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Now.
Move the item.
Second. There's a motion on the item, those in, okay, Dr. Wade has a question.
Sorry. Mr. Manager, or Mr. Simmons, are all these with the forced annexation? They're all part of that forced annexation and all there is? Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a second, seeing no further discussion, council, And the item passes by a vote of six to two. Thank you. Item twenty-two, this is time and place set for a public hearing to consider a resolution confirming an assessment role for water sewer main improvements on Memory Way from the existing eight-inch Jennings Road outfall northwest along Memory Way to 3925 South Holden Road.
No speakers, Mr. Manager.
There are no speakers on any of these items that follow.
Move to close the public hearing.
All right, those in favor? Aye.
Move the item.
There's a motion and a second on item twenty-two, no discussion. Council, please vote.
All of these assessments are city-initiated and it's issued.
What would happen if we turned these down?
What would happen if we turned these down? As you already, the council just said, we're not going to do this.
The other ratepayers in the city would end up paying for these improvements, these individual properties, is, that would be the effect of it.
So, we wouldn't be in violation of any type of state law by our obligation to put the major trunk lines in place during times after annexation?
You would not be in violation of any state law. What has happened is, is that you previously had a resolution that, that ordered the improvements to be installed, and what has happened is, the city has gone out, installed those improvements, determined what the cost, cost of those improvements were, and then made the preliminary assessment rule list how much would be assessed to individual property owners. There is always, there's a city share of these improvements that's being paid anyway, and then there's a portion of them that's being paid by the property owners.
Okay, so if these folks don't pay, the rest of us do?
Correct. Item 23. This is time and place set for a public hearing to consider a resolution confirming assessment role for water main improvements on Western Trail from an existing water main at 6013 Western Trail, approximately 500 linear feet to 6,016 Western Trail. Again, no speakers.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion second, those in favor? Aye.
Move the item.
Motion and second on item 23, further discussion, seeing none, council please vote. The item passes six to two. Item 24. This is time and place set for a public hearing to consider a resolution confirming assessment role for sewer main improvements on Western Trail from an existing sewer main at 6,013 Western Trail, approximately 500 linear feet to 6,016 Western Trail.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion second, those in favor? Aye.
Move the item.
Motion and second on item 24, seeing no discussion, council please vote. Has everyone voted? And the item passes by a vote of six to two. Thank you. Now, we move to item 25 on the agenda. This is a resolution approving extension in the amount of $3,950,000 in contract number 2010-13 with KRG Utility Incorporated for sanitary sewer rehab project K project.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Discussion on the item, seeing none, council please vote. And the item passes by a vote of eight to zero. Item 26 on the agenda. An ordinance in the amount of $97,650 amending the fiscal year 2011, 2012 general budget for the city's contribution to the Natural Science Center.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Matheny, let's see, okay, yes, Mr. Matheny.
We are moving pretty fast, but I just want to make a quick comment that we've got a lot of expansion, as everybody knows, and we've got a lot of great growth going on at the Natural Science Center, and as you've mentioned, this is a poster child for fiscal stewardship anywhere, but this is, this is just a one-time request, and I think I just wanted to clarify that in our agenda, that we've got a great public-private partnership, and this is just a one-time request to run it as appropriately as possible, and so I move the item.
There's a motion, Mr. Matheny, second by Dr. Wade, and Ms. Bellamy Small, you would speak.
Okay, I want to make sure I understand, this was an item that was, was cut from the budget, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and now we're putting it back in the budget, is that correct? If we vote for it?
That's correct.
Okay, then why did we cut it out of the budget?
Is that rhetorical?
No, it's a serious question. I mean, if we cut it out of the budget, and then we put it back in the budget, then we might as well put everything we cut out of the budget back in the budget, because I'm sure that justification could be made for everything that was cut out of the budget, in my opinion. So...
This request came from the Natural Science Center to help address their operating costs as a result of the capital program that they will be shortly, and have been pursuing for some time. As to why it's coming back to the budget, they made the request, and it's council's pleasure as to decide whether that request will be granted.
Okay, so that means that from here until we get into our next fiscal year, if anybody else wants to come back and ask that their portion be put back in the budget, if we vote in affirmative for this, we should vote in affirmative for everybody else, right?
That wouldn't be my question to answer.
Okay, well, I'm just putting it out there, because what's going to happen is, we're going to get unfair called on this. I'm not against it, but I'm just saying, because I wouldn't have cut it out of the budget in the beginning, but, you know, we're going to go down a slippery slope, then we're going to have to listen to anybody else that wants to come back and ask that we restore them to the budget. So, I guess in our new fiscal year, we should perhaps look again at whether or not it's necessary to cut, as opposed to cutting and then coming in a side door and putting it back in there, so that we can say that we cut it, when we really didn't cut it. Because if, I mean, am I, am I not, am I missing a point here?
That discussion about where the council wants to go with the budget and the policy it sets about outside agencies is yours to set, so that's a discussion I think you should have with your colleagues when it's time to frame the budget discussion.
Okay, but I just want to make sure I'm very clear, that we cut this out of the budget, now we're putting, we possibly are going to put it back in the budget, so I'm very clear on that, right?
That's, that's a correct statement.
Thank you very much.
No further discussion, we have a motion, we have a second on the item, council please vote. And the item passes eight to zero. Thank you. Now we have a time set aside for public comment period for speakers from the floor, excuse me, speakers from the floor on non-agenda items. Each speaker will be given a three-minute opportunity to address the council. Thirty minutes are allocated for this purpose, and speaker, and there will be a minimum of 10 speakers allowed, in the order in which they have signed up, and I will call your names, and as I call your name, please come to the podium and give your name and address, and you have three minutes. First, I have Nancy Cavanagh, then Charles Cherry, then Robert Reyes.
My name is Nancy Cavanagh. I reside at 4505 Summit Avenue, Greensboro. Tonight, I speak to the faction of council that supported the reopening of the White Street landfill, including you, Mayor Knight. I chastise you as a faction for the following: the divisive manner in which you have governed our city during your tenure, by attempting at every turn to silence our voices; your total disregard for the needs of your fellow city residents by not addressing the high rate of unemployment that Greensboro continues to incur, resulting in little or no funding to meet the daily needs of a large segment of our population that continue to struggle with food insecurity and the absence of affordable and safe housing, and in many instances, housing itself. Lastly, your lack of leadership and vision for your constituents. You have made yourself a governing faction body, unavailable to your community by the very nature of your public lack of transparency. On this issue, I request that Councilman Thompson withdraw from the upcoming council race due to the facts concerning his campaign funding that have not been, that were reported this morning in the news and record. I ask that all registered voters withdraw their support in the upcoming primary and general election. For you, Mayor Knight, you, Dr. Wade, you, Mr. Thompson, and you, Ms. Rexstraw, thank you for your time and attention. Any questions? Thank you.
My name is Charles Cherry, and I live at 2104 Liberty Valley Road in Greensboro. It is Hispanic Heritage Month. To all those of Hispanic heritage, thank you for what you bring to our community, to include your diversity. Assistant Chiefs Anita Holder and Dwight Crox committed crimes against me. District Attorney Doug Henderson is now reviewing those criminal complaints. I will keep you posted. Councilwoman Diane Bellamy Smalls proudly wears her braided locks and colorful dashikis, expressing her ethnicity. However, when she was a Greensboro police officer, based on her accounts, she experienced racism, discrimination, and sexism, eventually leaving the department. If a council member called a citizen a racist epithet tonight, they wouldn't be a council member tomorrow. Talk to people like Jimmy the Greek or Don Imus, although those individuals don't have the power to take your freedom or your life like a Greensboro police officer. Remember, two unarmed black men gunned down by Greensboro police within the last five years. I was informed through GPD officers that Officer G.F. Pinson, a training officer, referred to a Hispanic officer in the most racist, derogatory, insensitive, and unprofessional manner. Officer Pinson called the Hispanic officer a wetback, the equivalent of calling an African-American the N-word. I filed a complaint on behalf of the Hispanic officer. The GPD conducted an investigation, and the GPD concluded, and I quote, "After careful review, it has been determined that Officer Pinson's actions were in violation." I repeat, "were in violation." Therefore, a ruling of sustained has been assigned," end quote. Officer Pinson called his coworker a racist epithet. Chief Ken Miller, you must have a standard of non-tolerated conduct. Chief Ken Miller, you can't manage what you can't measure. You cannot measure the extent to which a police officer will take racism, given the authority they have. No law enforcement agency in the country will allow non-racists to police their communities. You have never been certain, you can never be certain of why Officer Pinson takes actions he does against minorities. Officer Pinson is a training officer, still employed, and training other officers at the GPD, producing a legion of racists. I would like for Assistant City Manager Michael Speedling, who supervises the GPD, to come to the podium and explain to our 9% Hispanic, 46% minority and community at large, how and why a racist officer using racist epithets can retain employment at the GPD. Assistant City Manager Michael Speedling, and if you would, just raise your hand so we can know who you are. Could you come to the podium? Assistant City Manager Michael Speedling. Can I, I'm going to point you out just to make sure that everybody knows. Assistant City Manager Michael Speedling, would you come to the podium and tell our 9% Hispanic, 46% minority and community at large, why a racist officer using racist epithets can retain employment at the GPD? Assistant City Manager Michael Speedling, would you please come earn your $117,000 salary? Thank you for your time.
Now we have Robert Reyes, and then Ahmed Blake, and Alfonso McGlynn, in that order.
Good evening, my name is Robert Reyes. I reside at 17 Aspen Drive in Greensboro. I'm a former Greensboro police officer. I am at this recorded council meeting giving you the council authority to review or have reviewed my city personnel file, if that is needed to resolve my concern. I would provide you with a copy of this signed document giving you the authority, in addition, because some resolving this, resolving this issue is essential in maintaining public confidence in GPD. Personnel law will allow you access to my files. I am Hispanic. I filed a complaint of discrimination through channels to City Manager Rashad Young's office. Police Chief Ken Miller terminated me stating I was insubordinate because the complaint was filed in Mr. Young's office. City Manager Rashad Young concurred with Chief Miller. The city wanting to verify if my termination was justified solicited the Unemployment Security Commission, a neutral party, to review and make determination of whether I was justly terminated or not. The Unemployment Security Commission officer ruled in my favor, and I quote, "Claimant did not act with any malice or sincerity, disregard of employer's policy, when he submitted the September 30, 2030 complaints to Mr. Young's office. Claimant had a reasonable reason for such submission. Furthermore, this cannot be considered a deliberate violation of policy. Thereafter, Claimant was told not to submit any further documentation Mr. Young offers. Claimant did not. The complaints ended up in Mr. Young's office, cannot be attributed to the Claimant. Claimant submitted those complaints to the proper chain of command. Claimant cannot be deemed insubordinate in this manner, because he did not act in defiance of the orders given by Mr. Young and Mr. Miller," end quote. In addition, Mr. Young stated in my termination document that I gave Reverend Nelson Johnson confidential employee information that Reverend Nelson Johnson gave to the local media, this is a lie, and on Friday, Reverend Nelson filed a complaint on September 30th, 2011. Counsel, the reality is, I was terminated because I filed a genuine complaint of discrimination to include a complaint against Chief of Police Ken Miller. A recent GPD investigation, Officer G.F. Pinson confirms racist actions against Hispanics in GPD. This also confirms the climate for Hispanics and minorities in GPD. It is clearly learned to behave as Officer Pinson is a training officer. Counsel, now that you know that I am Hispanic, the independent employment hearing officer solicited by the city ruled in my favor, you know that Hispanics are targeted and discriminated against in GPD. Mr. Young lied on Reverend Nelson Johnson and my termination document, and I was terminated for filing complaints of discrimination. I humbly request that you direct Mr. Young to write me a letter proclaiming that I was unjustly terminated. Will you do that for me, please? And I have copies, I'd like to just go ahead and pass and leave with the council members.
Is there any questions? Next speaker, please, your time is expander.
Good evening, my name is Ahmed Blake, and I live at 5856 Old Oak Ridge Road in Greensboro. I am Hispanic, I am a former Greensboro police officer. I filed a complaint against Sergeant James Hoffremeyer for calling Hispanic citizens wetbacks. Sergeant Hoffremeyer admitted to making the comment. Assistant Chief Dwight Crox did nothing except tell me that it looked as if though I was hypersensitive. I made complaints against the GPD gang unit for targeting Hispanics. The GPD retaliated against me. Captain John Wolfe called me, and I quote, "A sorry sack of S-H-I-T," end quote. I complained of a hostile work environment. Captain Wolfe admitted to making the comment. Captain John Wolfe was not disciplined. Instead, the retaliation became greater to the point that officers threatened not to assist me on radio calls. Assistant Chief Anita Holder accosted me while off duty, had me taken to her office and threatened my employment because I waved at a Hispanic citizen. I complained of the violation to Mr. Rashad Young. Mr. Young never investigated my complaints. In August of 2010, the same Assistant Chief Crox, who stated I was hypersensitive for complaining of discrimination, terminated me. I was terminated for malicious gossip because of truthful statements I made at a press conference regarding discrimination and disparaging treatment against minorities. Mr. ... Mr. Young confirmed the statements that I made were truthful. In addition, I had already been punished previously for that particular incident. Counsel, Sergeant Hoffkemeyer and Officer GF Pinson, a training officer, are confirmed racists that target Hispanics. Can you have Mr. Young explain why we have confirmed racist officers wrongfully targeting minorities and administrators that condone it working at the GPD? Also, will you direct Mr. Young to investigate my allegations of discrimination? And I have a copy for council members and the media.
Next speaker is Curtis H. Brown, followed by James Lewis, and Jorge Cornell.
I'm Curtis Brown. I live at 6106 Longbridge Court, Pleasant Drive, North Carolina. I'm here today to ask Mr. Young to explain why on August 16th, he said that there were no officers who were allowed to investigate themselves. I want us to look just for a moment, two minutes, at this DVD and see if this is not so.
And disciplined you, and it tells you you can have a hearing, and the chief of police is the chair of that hearing. How do you feel you have, you have your fair share? I mean, I don't, and I'm not ridiculing.
Police can't police the community if they can't police themselves. So officers have to file complaints with the people that the complaints are against, which means, Nelson and others have said, in order for the officers to be found innocent, the people who have done the complaints are against, will have to find themselves guilty.
So why you didn't do it?
So, I'm just trying to.
So therefore, but you just said that you weren't named, but now, see, how you investigate yourself?
Because I was directed to.
See?
And I will continue to be doing the same thing when I'm directed to. You didn't put my name in here, first of all, and also, I have to do a response on the one that you put my name in. So I'll do that, too. I'll do that, too, because guess what? It came from the city manager. And if it comes from the city manager, comes down through my chain, I do what my boss tells me to do. I'm just gonna tell him. He directs me to do something, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna do it to the best of my ability. Okay? So if it comes down the chain back to me, guess what? Sergeant Davis is gonna take care of it, and that's what I'm gonna do. And again, I am telling you, I told you once, probably two times, three times, anything else needs to come through me, and there will be opportunities appropriate, if there is.
That's clearly a, an evidence that officers are allowed to investigate themselves. To further prove that, this is a signed document where Sergeant Davis signed it after investigating himself and quitting himself of any wrong flag. I'd like to give you that. I'd like to have Mr. Young do the same. That video and that signed document. And thank you. You can have the rest.
Okay. Next speaker, James Lewis, and then.
Mr. Mayor, before you start my time, I've got a public records document. Am I allowed to read that document here at the council? Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is James Lewis. I reside at 1101 Hamill Road. My intent this evening is to gain a better understanding of the city's spending behavior and spending culture. I'm gonna read is a very short email from Rashad Young to mayor and members. The subject is interns. FYI, Jim Key and Robbie Perkins have arranged for interns to work on projects with and for them. It would be out of the council office area and under the direct supervision of the city clerk, the interns would come from A&amp;T and Bennett College and would be paid via the transfer of travel funds of the two members. They are slated to start October the 1st, Rashid. Please note that the email sent to and from this address is subject to the North Carolina Public Records Law and may be disclosed to third parties. I have a few observations and questions. Number one, to my knowledge, the city does not have a line item budget to fund interns. Number two, what are these interns doing specifically for Mr. Perkins and Mr. Key that no other city employee couldn't do? At least, the last count, the city had approximately 3,000 employees. Number three, if Councilmember Perkins and Key do not need their entire travel budget, certain the balance of those funds go back to the general fund. Respectfully, travel funds are designated for the purpose of council members' travel. Respectfully, designated budget funds are not to the property of the individual council members, but the citizens of Greensboro. Possibly, the travel budgets are simply too large and should be adjusted accordingly at the next budget cycle. Number four, I noticed that the interns are only coming from A&amp;T and Bennett College. I also noticed that Mr. Perkins and Mr. Key attended a Bennett College Municipal Candidates' Forum on September 29th, and will attend another forum at A&amp;T on October the 20th. I have a few questions. A, is there any connection to the funds intern, funding the interns with city resources and attending candidate forums at the very same institutions? B, is there any law against potentially influencing students and faculty votes by funding intern programs with city resources for Bennett and A&amp;T? C, is it unfair for incumbent council members to use their internal influence to allocate city resources when their opponents cannot? And D, is there some reason other colleges were left out? What about UNCG and Guilford? Finally, should it be the business of the city government to fund intern programs with taxpayer dollars? Should intern programs be considered essential services that all the citizens of Greensboro benefit from? This is a topic for the next budget, not three months into the current budget, and certainly not at a time of elections. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, continue. Mr. Cornell, and then we'll, we don't, we'll just let, here are speakers. We'll have time, we've got plenty of time for council members later.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jorge Cornell, and I reside at 2506 Poncroft Road. I am Hispanic, and I have been arrested 21 times by the Greensboro Police Department. About 18 of those charges were felonies. I was not convicted of any of those 18 charges. Mayor and City Council, there is not that much incompetence in the GPD. I was arrested that amount of times and not convicted because I was racially profiled and targeted by the GPD. In fact, I have made numerous of complaints regarding this discrimination, targeting, and harassment, but to no avail. It has come to my attention that the racism and discrimination and targeting of minorities by the GPD was verified when Officer GF Pinson was found to be using racist, insensitive, and unprofessional language to describe Hispanics. Officer Pinson refers to Hispanics as wetbacks, and apparently trains others to do so, as Pinson is a training officer. Being a racist is much different than making a mistake. Yes, we forgive Officer Pinson because we all need forgiving, but you only get one chance to use a racial, you know, ethnicity in the workplace. And when that occurs, disciplines must be swift, certain, and just. Determination is the only option. The only professional occupation nomination that would allow a racist to retain employment is apparently the GPD. Counsel, the effects of a criminal record on any citizen, especially when it is unwarranted, can be life-altering. My question is, how can the minority community trust the GPD when officers are confirmed to be using racial ethnicity but are allowed to retain employment? What is the standards of conduct when an officer using racist ethnicities is allowed to retain employment? I'd like to ask Mayor Raystraw to answer that for me. Trudy Wade, Zach Matheny, I get an answer from Knight, Nancy Vaughn, Key, Perkins. What about you, Bellamy Small? I get an answer from you? He told me you love me the other day.
Let's clarify. Are you saying epithets? Is that what you're trying to say?
Huh?
Racial slurs?
Yes.
Oh, okay. It's personnel. You're complaining on the officers. We have a process for handling, you know that.
Yeah, but what about when you've been? What about when you've been through that process, and it's like nobody's hearing you? But this is confirmed that there's an officer on GPD that's a confirmed racist. It's confirmed in paperwork, black and white.
It's a personnel matter. You know we can't discuss it. At least I responded, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
But I did not tell you I love you. I told you that there were no issues between us, okay?
No, you did tell me you love me. You did tell me you love me.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dr. Reginald Kelly, and then Christopher McLaughlin, and then Nelson Johnson. That will conclude the sign-up speakers for the evening.
I'm Reginald Kelly, founder of the Open Door, pastor of King's Corner Church.
Your address, too, please, sir.
I'm sorry, 908 King George, here in the city of Greensboro. And before the council tonight to say to you that I watch you a lot on television, and I've seen a lot of the things going back and forth in our city, and I know a young man who has been totally dedicated into his job of serving this community as well as God. And I, along with some other people in our office, just told him he needed to run for council. And I'm talking about Christopher McLaughlin, who is here tonight. He's running, City Councilman at Large, and is here tonight to let some of you see his face as we met. Mr. Perkins and I on this matter, but we've met before. And hopefully, the city will give him a seat up there to represent this great city we live in. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Christopher McLaughlin. I reside at 908 King George in Greensboro. Like Dr. Kelly said, just wanted to come and introduce myself to the city. Like he said, we've met with Mr. Perkins, and just wanted to say that, like he said, we've seen the situation and issues going on in our city, and I am a citizen, and I see the things going on, and if I were to sit on the city council, I would not only be a councilperson, but I would also be a citizen, because I'm a citizen now, and if I were elected, I'd be there and would still feel the same as any citizen and see the things going on. And I don't, I'm not familiar with a lot of the issues, and I, you know, I don't know a lot of the percentages, but I know that the city of Greensboro has a population of almost 300,000 people, and when you sit on that council, you represent each and every one of them. And so you have to have an open mind, and you can't be pigeonholed from one issue to another. You have to represent the entire city. And if given that chance, I feel that I can, and I know that I will represent the city to the best of my ability. So when you go out to vote, my name's on the ballot, Christopher McLaughlin.
Nelson Johnson, sign up speaker. Here, okay. This is our last speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. My name is Nelson Johnson. I reside at 2115 Murray Hill Road in the city of Greensboro. I submitted a complaint to this council concerning a false statement in the report of our city manager. Let me say that I, and I hope that you've gotten it, I hope that you've read it, that I really don't like to come here, and I don't like to share things like I'm sharing, but it's very, very serious. In that report, the city manager said that I was given confidential information by an officer that I was counseling, that I then gave that information to the media. That's absolutely not true. There's no truth whatsoever in it. And I've given you that report, I've documented it. Not only did I not give it, I didn't instruct anybody else to give it, I didn't encourage anybody to give it, and I didn't speak to anyone about giving it. If a report revealed that, that was an awfully flawed investigative process. And so I'm asking this council, as the employer of our city manager, to investigate this and to make a good-faith determination, because I know it didn't happen. It didn't happen. And it is a serious matter when a leading person in our city makes a false statement, submits it to writing, and takes it before the Employment Council, and it results, it wasn't really honored there, because they didn't raise it, I was down there to testify, but it was part of termination of Officer Reyes. That's very serious. It damages his family, and I want to say to you, I hope you don't blow this off and say that it's just part of a batch of complaints. I'm asking you to take it serious personally, this is not personal. When you base policy and actions on falsehoods, you're headed down the wrong road. I'm probably the easiest person in this city to slander and to blame, but I'm gonna stand up, and even though it's a few of us, everything starts with a few. Four is few. And I want you to take this serious, and I want you to give me a response after you've looked at this, and if you find it to be true, and you almost have to, then I want an apology from our city manager on behalf of the city, and I want the truth represented in that report on Officer Reyes. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Wade?
Mr. Manager, we've had a lot of speakers tonight. I know the public has heard these speakers. And all of the complaints that have come forth tonight, have you investigated all these complaints? I know we can't discuss personnel issues, but I think the citizens would like to know that they have been investigated.
Dr. Wade, there's one item that I heard tonight that I had not heard before, and it was in the comments of Mr. Blake that we will go back and review. There's one allegation that he offered today that is new information to me, I believe. I had not heard it in his set of issues or cases, but the other comments from the other individuals, including the balance of Mr. Blake's comments, we have heard, they have been investigated and responded to in the appropriate appeals process for their personnel issues. Except for the one, and that one, we will go back and follow up on that issue.
And if the persons making the complaints are not satisfied with the investigation through channel through your office, what is their next step? Do they sue the city of Greensboro?
From a personnel perspective, the city manager is the final authority on all personnel matters involving employees that work for the city of Greensboro. Remedies beyond that would include certainly whatever remedy one wanted to pursue in the courts, but certainly also EEOC would be an avenue as well.
And the council can really not intervene in that in any way? You have the final decision on that, and...
Under the form of government in which we operate, the city manager is the final authority on all personnel matters, and that isn't subject, as far as I know, to review or overturning by the elected body.
Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
That is correct.
That is correct.
So the next step would be to go either with a lawsuit or go to the EEOC?
Right. Some remedies such as that outside of this structure, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, while you're... Oh, Ms. Bellamy Small.
Mr. Manager, are the policies that are part of your personnel, are they available online or...
Yes.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is because, again, as we've had speakers come and they've addressed what they believe to be the unfairness, I think that maybe some of our citizens would like to see the policy as it's written for themselves, so that it's not... And I've asked, and I appreciate Mr. Pollard in addressing what we legally can and cannot do with Mr. Reyes. And Mr. Cherry, we're beginning a copy of that letter, too, you know, because we have our policy, and we also have, as you explained at the last council meeting, the state law that prohibits, at least at this time, for us doing that. So do they just go to the website and go to...
Most of the policies that relate to this issue can be found on the police department site, and you can go to GPD directives. That includes the majority of the policies that relate to these issues. Or you can go to the human resources site and see the set of general personnel policies. I'll add, just, you didn't ask this question, but I will add, in terms of some of the other issues that were raised tonight about use of words and issues with individual officers, those have been investigated and addressed within the chain of command in the police department, and where appropriate, the appropriate personnel remedy has been handed out. One might disagree what that remedy is, or they may be unaware of what it is, because we can't discuss another employee's personnel matters. But those issues have been addressed and by the chain of command, and in my review, satisfactorily handled. But to your question, yes, you can go to the website and the police department, and I believe the general policies under human resources are available on the site. If they are not, one can request those from us, and we can provide them.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, while I have you, do you have any addendum items?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, three minutes, if you will. You know, if you have any databank additions, commission report, I think, will be coming to us next meeting from the manager. So any comments you have, perhaps if you could limit three minutes. Who'd like to start? Ms. Vaughn, would you care to begin?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Key?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address the speakers' concern about the internship program, and hopefully I can get this in in three minutes. The internship program was actually a program that I proposed over a year ago, and it started... It's actually a pilot program that started at A&amp;T in Bennett, because they're in my district. And it's, and we're looking to expand that throughout the city to all the colleges and universities. And these interns, these two interns are at the disposal of the entire council, not just Councilman Perkins and myself. And travel budgets have been used in various ways for various things by various council members. And it's simply a job creation and work experience program for these students, something they can put on their resumes, something that they can earn a little money while learning about city government. So that's the plain and simple of the internship program. And I'd also like to invite all the council members to a press conference that we're having on Thursday at the Bessemer Shopping Center at 2521 Phillips Avenue, as well as all citizens. This is a major announcement, and we would like for you to be there to participate. It's very exciting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
Just to make it perfectly clear, I am a member of the Board of Trustees at Bennett College, and this weekend enjoyed a couple of days' service over there. And I attended the board meeting with the former president of Food Lion, who's also on that board. We just had Yvonne Johnson, who had just completed the service of 10 years on the board, stepped down as chairman of the board, and she was replaced by Charles Barrantyne, who is a former senior executive at Eastman Kodak out of Rochester, New York. And to have the privilege of serving on the board of directors with an outstanding group of leaders from across the United States is really special to me. The college has seen tremendous, tremendous improvement and growth over the past several years. I think you can remember before Jeanetta Cole was the president of Bennett, we were down to about 400 in attendance, and this year we'll have over 750 students at Bennett College, which is, if you don't know, is one of two African-American women's colleges left in the United States, the other being Spelman in Atlanta. And the capital planet Bennett has recently had two significant, or actually three significant additions, one being a large honors dorm, the second being a global learning center, and the third being an intergenerational building that takes children from two years old up through senior adults and works with them as the passage of life. On Saturday, we did celebrate a million-dollar gift for that intergenerational center given by Mrs. Joyce Dixon, who was an alumni of Bennett College. And I was privileged to attend that ceremony, and with about 300 other citizens, most of which were from Greensboro, North Carolina. So I am proud to be part of the Bennett family, and I am also a bit disturbed that someone would say that my allocation of $1,000 of an internship money toward a student serving at the pleasure of this council and would be inappropriate is pretty trivial to me. And if it was just said to me, I wouldn't have a comment on that. But it was said about Bennett and the relationship between activities over there and this government, and I thought it was highly inappropriate.
Mr. Mayor, it's going to take me a little more than three minutes, but I want to start out by sharing with the council the celebration that's been going on at the pool, the GAC, for the last two weeks going into the third week. First of all, if you run the pictures, we started out with Murphy Traditional Academy, and as I explained to you, when we had our last council meeting, these young people were scared to even get in the water. This is a picture of the author, and he's also an Olympic medalist, gold medalist. His name is Shabir Mohammed, and he was talking to the children. They were very excited. He also went to Peck Elementary that morning, and Peck started their swimming on Monday, and I was in the pool with them on Monday. As you can see, these kids now, they were jumping in the water and swimming, whereas the first day, they would barely, you know, put their feet in the water. It's a beautiful center. The staff has been super, from the lifeguards to Mr. Turner, who's over the lifeguards. They took a lot of attentiveness with each young swimmer. And I can tell you, if you had seen the difference between Monday of the first week and Friday of the last week, where they came back twice, their parents came. We had over 70 parents that did show up at the pool. They were well behaved. It was a really exciting kind of thing. And if you've not had a chance to come over, Peck is there from 12:15 until 1:15 this week and next week. The Peck swimmers are actually more advanced than these children who were from Murphy. But we actually dunked the principal on the last day, clothes and all, shoes, belt and everything, just threw him in. And the kids loved it. I wanted... See, I knew I was going to do that. Okay, this is his book, Shabir Mohammed, who lives in Atlanta, good-looking young man, but very attentive to children, and they enjoyed seeing him. And I think each child got a copy of his book, and he autographed the book. I also have for each of you the schedule for the aquatic center. There is everything from paddle ducks all the way to senior swimming. And, Mr. Mayor, they'll even take you over in the deep water and give you a float. But since you were in the Coast Guard, you probably already know how to swim.
You're right. Long time ago.
Okay.
Were you thrown in the pool? Were you thrown in the pool?
No, I went in voluntarily. But if you come over there, I'll throw you in. Okay, is that all my GAC pictures? Okay. Then I also want to recognize Hayes Taylor YMCA is having their annual walk at Barbara Park on October the 20th, is it the 22nd? He's going to put the flyer up. There we go. Yeah, on the 22nd. Their 5K walk, and it will be at Barbara Park. I also want to recognize the Women's Empowerment Program that was held at Peeler Recreation Center this past Sunday. Captain Henson and his staff did a great job. This month is also Domestic Violence Month and Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And then the second week in September is Fire Prevention Week, and we're going to have the grand opening of two fire stations this coming Saturday. Station 61, which is on Van Dea Road, East Van Dea Road at Am Ugen Street, they'll have their grand opening at 10 o'clock, and we'll be recognizing the class of 61, which is the first African-American class of firemen to graduate. And then Station 57, which is on Mount Hope Church Road, will have its uncoupling at 2 p.m. Both of these are this coming Saturday. And then we want to give condolences to Chief Grayson and his family on the loss of his mother, and also wish him to get well soon. Thank you. And this is a T-shirt that the kids got, and it has, only theirs says, "I learned to swim at the GAC." But they were all very appreciative. So please come over and swim with the kids. Thank you.
Mr. Matheny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know, Dr. Wade, I think you had your walk, was it last night? We're going to have a District 3 walk to the community in the neighborhood of Kirkwood next Tuesday, November, or, excuse me, October the 11th. I think it begins at 5:00 and ends at 7:00. And so I look forward to showing again staff parts of our District 3 in our city. Tonight, at the One Memorial Auditorium, our former Prime, the former Prime Minister of England, actually, Tony Blair, is speaking to a sold-out crowd, which is pretty special to have here in Greensboro. And like Diane was saying, I don't know if she's going to be in the United States synchronized swimming team, but Olympic trials do start, and the tickets go on sale for that on October the 7th this coming week, and that's going to be in November. And again, that's the first Olympic trials that this city has seen, and so that's a big deal. And so we've got everything from beginning swimming to literally Olympic trials, and that's pretty special for our city. The fair had a great week the last week and drew over 43,000 people to the fair. So it was a pretty big year for the fair this year. I think there's an election night coming up, and I hope our citizens will go out and vote next Tuesday. It's been pretty lackluster at the polls, I think, forever, and it'd be nice for our citizens to come show up and care and do what we in America have the right to do, and I hope you vote.
Dr. Wade?
Thank you for mentioning my community walk. It was last night. We really enjoyed it. Donna Gray did a great job putting it on, and I also want to say that Jim Farley and Danny Leinberger from the community certainly helped organize everything. If you're listening tonight in those neighborhoods and you didn't see the manager last night, we forgot to tell you he was homesick. We were having such a good time, we just forgot about it. Sorry, Mr. Manager. But we had great representation there, I think, all the city staff. I think we answered our, at least gave direction on some problems that we're having in that neighborhood. And I also heard a lot of neighbors saying nice things about, especially the police department, the fire department, and what good service they were giving that neighborhood, or both those neighborhoods. The other thing I wanted to mention, since we brought up our travel expenses, I don't want the citizens to think we can take money that's been appropriated for travel expenses and do anything we want with it. It's designated for a certain purpose. And I know last year that four, maybe four or five council members helped me with returning their money to the general fund by not using it, and let the manager see about contracting to get some Community Watch T-shirts for everyone across the city. And I know, Mr. Matheny, Mr. Raystraw, thank you, Mayor, Danny, and I donated what we had of our funds back to the general fund, and then the manager, at his discretion, was able to help get vests, actually, for the community watches, so when they were out in the community walking around, that they would have a vest on that identified them that also reflected, and maybe they wouldn't be run over in traffic. But I just didn't want the citizens to think that. Is that not correct, Mr. Manager? It has to go back to the general fund first.
Ms. Raystraw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Mr. City Manager, you have until October 17th to heal yourself so that you can come out for my neighborhood walk. And so I hope all the staff will be ready to, really willing and able to go, and I certainly do appreciate that. And also, there was a breakfast downtown, and DGI, I think, was the host of that particular breakfast, and they did award the police department with an honor for being very visible downtown, which everybody seemed to appreciate. The other thing I need to ask, Mr. City Manager, I've been to a lot of forums, and I have heard some concerns about the doors being closed. And would you explain how that came to be, or what we need to do? And also, that sometimes when the chambers are filled, that some people aren't able to get in. And when we have staff who may not be, who may not have to be here for that particular issue, or any particular issue, and they don't need to see them here readily, could they be asked to maybe go outside and sit if they're waiting for, to be called? I would like to address those issues, because that has been a concern to the public, and I want to make sure that we're very open about that and what had happened.
Yeah, I'll address the security, safety issues here in the building first. We try to make the best of a bad situation. This building was built probably 1971 or '02, and it probably served its purpose then, but now we're having problems with directing the pedestrian traffic that flows through the building, with all of the changes that we've had, construction this year, where we're trying to make one-stop shop down on the UG level with things like development services to small business office. We've moved collections down there, and it gives an opportunity for citizens to come in through one entrance and conduct most of the business that the majority of the people come here for, that we see during the daytime. And we found that, we made attempts to put signage up, to direct the people to come where they had to go for primarily collections, parking tickets, water bills. The signs didn't work. We found that the citizens were coming in and wandering the building. It became a disruption to the employees in certain parts of the building, although a public building, not designed to support the citizen pedestrian traffic that was flowing through cubicles and offices. So we made an attempt to have the traffic redirect and get the citizens accommodated using the 300 West Washington Street entrance, so that we could accommodate their needs in a one-stop-shop fashion. As we looked at where the majority of the foot traffic was coming through, they were coming through Washington Street for police records, and also through Green Street. The plaza-level doors were the least traveled at the time we did the review. And so working in conjunction with engineering inspections, the security office, and in discussion with staff members, we took a shot at trying to limit the access through the plaza-level doors to see if that would help. But we found signage just didn't help, because people to this day aren't reading the signs. And unfortunately, people were wandering the building and getting more frustrated. As construction is beginning to wind to a close, we'll continue to examine and take a look at the best ways to try and isolate those areas that should be isolated to allow the employees to get their jobs done without having to be constant directors of traffic, and also try to accommodate the citizens so that it takes the burden off of them. And so this is a trial and error attempt to try and... And so, this is a trial and error attempt to try and minimize the disruption in the building as we're doing construction throughout. And we anticipate to close that construction down by the end of this year, and continue to reassess. So, that has been that ploy.
Excuse me, Mr. Spilling, does that also address the issue with folks coming to our city council meetings?
No, that's different. The city council, we have, by fire code, an ordinance of how many people can occupy the building, the room at one time. We've made the mistake in the past of allowing people to stand on the back wall. And we've had, during my tenure here, twice, people pass out on the back wall. They end up standing for long periods of time, locked their knees, and one thing leads to another, and they fall. But in the meantime, besides people falling and hurting themselves, we're limited by law, by city ordinance, on how many people can occupy this building. That's the reason we put the TV outside, so those, it's kind of a first-come, first-served. If you're in the building, in the council chambers, when it's filled, then you're okay. But unfortunately, the folks that come after the fact, we have no place to put them. We can't, we're only designed to hold so many. The capacity level is listed over on the wall. And it really boils down to when the seats are filled, there's no more capacity left in the room.
And I'm also referring to the doors being opened so that the folks can get into the building on city council nights.
Yeah, we have made adjustments on that. We open those doors downstairs on Plaza, 4 o'clock, and all those doors have always been open. We now address the Plaza level, because at that opportunity, we do have enough security personnel on one hand. We bring extra one in for council meetings. And so, we do have opportunity to direct the people coming in on Plaza level during council nights. So, it really boils down to when the Plaza door is non-council night, we just don't have the staff or the security personnel, either Public Affairs or Security, to help direct the people. But in council nights, we do. So, we are opening those doors now at 4 o'clock in the afternoons. And of course, Green Street and the handicap ramp continue to be left open.
Okay. Well, I know that y'all are going to continue to look at this and continue to look at it, because it has been a problem with some of the folks who've been trying to come into the building. And we just want to make sure that we don't give the impression that we're trying to keep people out of the building. And we do have a certain amount, and I certainly appreciate the fact that y'all are trying to keep everybody safe. But I just want to look at these issues so that we don't keep people out of the building.
Yes, ma'am. And I think it's a fair statement. And we'll continue to reassess as we wind down the construction and try to get the flow right in a building that really wasn't designed to do the things we currently do. So, it'll be an evolution. Hopefully, we'll make it as easy as we can.
Thank you.
Two or three things. Oh, Mr. Key, I did not attend an ACC school, and my son-in-law was a UT guy, University of Tennessee. But just so you'll know, I, Saturday before last, after being drowned in a rainstorm at a, seeing our granddaughter run across country racing down in Hagenstone, I started coming down with a cold. But I went to Oertay and T to a football game. And I got to go to the pre-game activities, and I stayed for part of the first quarter. I had to dodge out because of winds blowing, and I was afraid I'd get cold. But I just want you to know, I was there, and regrettably, they didn't win. But it was a great event, you know? That band is something to behold. But great facility, just wanted you to know that. This morning, I went out, and I'll make a pitch for Red Cross. They are beginning again, you can go to their website, they're beginning something that started last year, identifying heroes, people who should be recognized as true heroes. And then you think about the military or first responders, whether they be from our police or fire or 9/11, et cetera, emergency services people, or they can be people out of the community who have done things that really take on a heroic quality. I would encourage you to look at their website. They are soliciting, not people to apply, but if you want to recommend someone that they would consider. This will lead to a February event, as it did last year, which was a very, very moving event. I would highly recommend that. I recently had the honor of attending, second time, the Filipino-American Association's meeting here. And it's quite a proud group, and great Americans, and very accomplished, and just an honor to be there. And I just want to say that in case anyone is watching. And to those who may or may not be aware, the Flight of Honor, I think, and that's gotten a lot of publicity here, there will be two more flights. The last one will be November the 11th. There's one before then. And I will, I personally will get to go on the November 11 flight as a guardian again. And it's quite an honor to do that, to honor some of our older veterans. And unfortunately, we're losing that group quickly. But I would encourage anybody to go to the airport. This is not an event for elected officials. It's just an event to go. And, you know, I go, I mean, just as nondescript as I can be, just to be there. And with the several hundred other people who always come, there's always a big crowd. And even when they arrive at Reagan Airport, the crowd is even larger up there. I went last year, and it's amazing that the amount, the turnout of people. Bob and Liddy Doyle were there this last time to greet the veterans. And it's just, you can't say enough about what it is. And you talk about some men and women who are in their 90s, and some even over 100, who just break out in just a broad smile when they come back in the airport, and they see a band and just singing. And it's just, it's just an awesome event. I would encourage anybody to go out to the airport. It takes place at about 8:30 PM, when the light gets in, with the airport stream, with the fire trucks doing the stramers over the airplane. It's quite a treat to these folks. Excuse me. The, one other thing, just to call your attention, October the 17th, the Across the Street here, there's going to be the dedication of the, what used to be the IRS Building. That's going to be the new home to the police department, and there will be a dedication ceremony for that. And, you know, I think it's real important. This is going to be a big, big deal for our police department, having their own home for the first time. And so, I encourage everybody to come to that. And with that, that's all I have to say. Yes?
Mr. Manager, we had the last business summit that the partnership and the chamber put forth in my district a week ago. And I thank you, Mr. Manager, for coming. Do you know when they are going to tabulate the information? You know, I thought some, actually, the business summit, the business meeting we had in District 5, I thought we learned a lot, Mr. Mayor, I know you were there, from the citizens that own small businesses, and what we could do as the city to assist them. And I just wondered, when, I hate that the president of the chamber couldn't stay, and members of the partnership couldn't stay. I mean, the staff stayed to tabulate, but I wish they could have heard what they said in District 5, the small businesses. Do you know when we might have that?
I don't, Dr. Wade, but I can certainly find out, and I'll advise you all when they plan to issue something.
Because I thought it was very interesting, and I know that you did, because I know we came away with some ideas to help our small business office. And have you, Mr. Manager, have you looked at any of those ideas they brought forth about the RFPs?
We have, and we've been looking at a lot of issues around the local preference discussion that was raised at your summit. And I know that Mayor Proten had talked publicly about being interested in looking at some of those options. In fact, I'll be meeting with some of the staff from the partnership next week to talk a little bit about their ideas. Legal has weighed in in terms of what the statutes allow, and our purchasing and new contract compliance office has weighed in. So, we're trying to put together the information about the best way we might proceed with such a notion. So, we are actively looking at those issues. And in fact, we followed up directly on some of the cases, examples that were given at that summit about how our purchasing procedures, or bid procedures, had impacted certain small businesses. So, we did do a lot of follow-up with that issue.
So, you will give us a report at some time now we've changed?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Muthane?
Mr. City Manager, also, after
Ms. Vaughn, a small wish to make a comment.
After we had the small business meeting in District 4, I suggested that maybe after all this information is compiled, that the staff, and you and our city attorney, and all the council could sit down at a workshop and discuss some of the issues that were raised. Because I'm sure we had some very similar things, but we might have had some unique things. And I believe our group had some good ideas, they had some concerns. And maybe this will be a good way to set forth some planning for next year as far as economic development and making Greensboro more attractive for bringing in jobs and helping the existing businesses and small businesses that we have. But we did have a wonderful turnout, and I think that's been, this has been a good program for the districts and those at-large members who were able to attend as many of the meetings as they could. So, I do appreciate that, and I hope that we will have a work session on this issue.
Ms. Vaughn, a small
I had forgotten to thank Donna Gray and Kathy Justice and Green Carter and the rest of the staff for my neighborhood walk that was a week ago. And I also want to thank Butch Simmons, who advised me that some of the concerns that the citizens had on Conell Road, Good News Baptist Church, and the Friendship Association, those items were addressed as soon as the very next day. So, you know, the neighborhood walks, Mr. Manager, have been a good idea, and you've helped to bring it up close and personal to staff, as far as sometimes the decisions that they make, the impact on neighborhoods that perhaps they weren't quite aware of because they hadn't been out there on the street with it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, so, motion and second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned.